Good evening and welcome to an online meeting of the Burbank Planning Board on Monday, January 25, 2021. Before we begin our meeting, there will be one general period of public comment tonight during oral communications. Person speaking during the general public comment period may provide the planning board oral communication on any matter concerning city business. If you would like to participate in the public comment period, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open. This evening, Vice Chair Hadian will be leading us with the invocation, followed by Board Member Rosati with the flag salute. So will everyone please rise for the invocation?
Please join us in saluting our flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
May I have the roll call, please?
Board Member Rosati?
I'm here.
Board Member Gamboa?
Here.
Board Member Otakunian?
Virtually present.
Vice Chair Hadian?
I'm present.
And Chair Liu?
I'm present.
All members are present.
In order to balance the health risks associated with COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business in a transparent and open manner during the current state of emergency and in the interest of public health and safety, board members will be participating in an online planning board meeting. City facilities are closed to the public until further noticed, and the public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. The city is providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating in planning board meetings. In lieu of in-person attendance, members of the public may participate in public comment period by calling 818-238-3335. Do we have any announcements from city staff?
No new announcements.
Thank you. There are no public hearings on tonight's agenda, so we'll move forward to the next item. Now is the time for the reports from city staff. Any reports?
Yes, Chair, we have two reports being presented tonight, one on the housing element and the other one on the Golden State specific plan update.
Okay, so for report number one, there's a study session to review the work completed to date on state required updates to the Burbank 2035 general plan, housing and safety elements, and new environmental justice component. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the report for us?
Can everyone hear me?
Sorry, can you repeat yourself?
I just wanted to make sure everyone can hear me before I start.
Yes.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Good evening, Chair Liu and members of the board. My name is Lisa Frank, Senior Planner in the Community Development Department, and bear with me here. I'm going to share my screen so that we can begin the presentation. Okay. So again, good evening. My name is Lisa Frank, again, Senior Planner in the Community Development Department. Tonight's presentation for this item is regarding required updates to the Burbank 2035 general plan, including the housing element and safety elements, and a new requirement for an environmental justice component. This work will require staff to come back to the board for hearings to consider adoption of these updated documents. So before getting that far along, we wanted to take an opportunity to kind of walk through the relevant background, get your input, and take any questions or input that the board or any members of the public might have. So first, a little kind of additional background on the general plan and why we're here. The general plan is a state-required policy document that provides guidance in shaping the future of physical growth and development in the city. As depicted on this slide, it is made up of chapters or elements. Many of these are required by state law, such as housing, land use, mobility, safety, noise, and open space. Burbank's general plan is called Burbank 2035, and it was adopted by the City Council in 2013. So as mentioned in the opening, we are here because several updates to the general plan are required per state law. The biggest of such updates is to the housing element of the general plan, and this is due for state certification in October of 2021. But in addition to the housing element, several other state bills in recent years require additional general plan updates, including revising the safety element to address climate adaptation planning, as well as incorporating environmental justice goals, policies, and objectives throughout the general plan document. And I will be explaining more of each of these throughout the presentation. In light of these update requirements, again, most notably the housing element, which this presentation will focus on, staff is in the process of working with a consultant and subconsultant team, Karen Warner Associates, to undertake these required updates. The process kind of formally began in July of 2020 with a city council study session, and it covered much of the same material that you're seeing tonight. As part of that study session, the consultant provided kind of an initial assessment of relevant background information and an outline of the various requirements, and a copy of that assessment memo was provided in Exhibit 1 to this evening's staff report for reference. Okay, so what is the housing element? Just in case, just so everyone's kind of on the same page, the housing element is really a planning and policy document, again, part of the general plan, and every jurisdiction in the state is required to maintain and to update it periodically. Through housing elements, state law mandates that local governments adequately plan to meet existing and projected housing needs of all economic segments of the community. So to achieve this requirement, housing elements, including Burbank's existing housing element, are crafted using a combination of detailed statutory requirements and guidelines. And these requirements create the structure for the document. Some of the key components are identifying existing and projected housing needs in the city throughout the planning period, identifying potential and actual constraints to the maintenance, improvement, and development of housing, particularly affordable housing, identifying suitable sites for new housing, and creating programs contained in a housing plan, which are implementation measures to address the city's priority housing goals and objectives. Unlike other general plan elements, the state statutes governing the housing element are quite extensive, and they are continually evolving nearly every legislative cycle. Similarly, unlike other elements of the general plan, the housing element requires, it's required to review and revise the housing element every eight years. The city's existing housing element covers the eight-year planning period from 2014 to 2021, and the updated element will cover the eight-year planning period from 2021 through 2029. I'm going to say more about that. Oops, let me go back. Sorry about that. Okay, so sorry, let me just reiterate the last point. The updated element will cover 21 through 2029, which is the sixth cycle. In order for a housing element to be certified and therefore deemed in compliance with state law, it must first be reviewed or approved by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, within the statutory deadline. For the sixth cycle, that deadline again is October. Oops, I think I, I'm so sorry, I think I skipped ahead to... Okay, I'm sorry, I think I skipped ahead to the next slide. But let me continue from there. So in addition to meeting the deadline, the housing element will only be certified upon a determination by HCD that the document adequately addresses all applicable requirements. As noted in the staff report, there are a number of new laws taking effect for the sixth cycle, and Exhibit 1 attachment, specifically the Appendix A, included an outline of the key new updates that are taking effect, many of which focus on accountability and enforcement of the programs and contents of the housing element. And then, once the draft of the housing element is ready to be submitted to HCD, it can be submitted for a 60-day review, and HCD will review the draft, provide comments and input, which the city would then be able to address. And upon addressing those comments, should there be any, the HCD will issue a compliance letter on the final element. So you may be wondering, why is it important to have a state-certified housing element? There's really numerous benefits to this. Some of the key benefits are having presumption of a legally adequate housing element in the courts. If the housing element is not adequate or out of compliance, it could expose the city to greater legal risk. And then, generally, it allows us to maintain the current levels of local control that are available to the city. Having an out-of-compliance housing element jeopardizes that. Importantly, it helps maintain eligibility for state housing funds. They come about through time to time, various grants to the state. This is one of the key eligibility factors. And then, adopting and having a certified housing element on time also avoids triggering a shorter housing element cycle, which would be every four years. Very challenging to me. So I want to take a moment to kind of put all this together into the context of Burbank and some of the ongoing efforts over the last few years on the topic of housing specifically, namely, city council goal-setting over the last few years resulted in the 2017 Affordable Housing Analysis and Strategy, which really started to highlight Burbank's affordable housing puzzle. In other words, the combined factors of employment growth and limited new housing production, which have contributed to a widening gap between jobs and housing in the city, approximately three jobs to every housing unit, which is one of the highest jobs housing in buildings in the state. For reference, a range of 0.75 to 1.5 is usually considered optimal for reducing vehicle miles traveled and for meeting local demand for housing near employment centers. In 2019, the city council set a proactive goal to facilitate the building of 12,000 additional homes through 2035, and to do so in a way that builds and protects neighborhoods by strategically locating most new housing close to the city's employment centers and transit infrastructure. In addition, staff has been underway, one of which you'll hear about after this item, on other long-range planning efforts, including the Golden State specific plan, and an update to the Burbank Center Plan through the creation of the Downtown Burbank MetroLink Transit-Oriented Development specific plan. In addition, there are other possible areas for new housing could be within the Media District or other potential infill areas close to, again, the employment centers and transit. And these ongoing planning efforts to identify opportunity areas and strategically locate new housing will be reflected in the housing element update. And then, lastly, the city has also engaged in goal-setting in response to COVID-19, most recently through adoption of the Economic Recovery Plan, part of which looked at facilitating housing opportunities within the employment centers to support and encourage development and business recovery. So it's important to provide this context simply to highlight the fact that the council's goal-setting and city efforts over the last few years are also consistent with some of the key provisions in state law, and therefore really helps create a pretty good framework for making these required updates. Okay, so I just want to go back for a moment to sort of hone in a little bit more on some of the key topic areas that the update will look at, and this was also noted and highlighted in the staff report. As mentioned earlier in the presentation, one of the key components are the housing programs, and these programs must identify specific implementation measures to implement and achieve stated goals and policies that have been identified. For reference, the existing housing element has goals that relate to conserving and improving the existing housing stock, facilitating housing development on sites that accommodate a range of housing types, development of affordable housing, addressing constraints to housing, and promoting and ensuring equal housing opportunities. So the programs in the housing element, which will be provided in draft form and staff returns back with a draft to the housing element, will essentially update what we currently have on the books and address any new statutory requirements. Potential topic areas that would be included relate to, again, protection of existing housing stock and tenants, and referencing some of the recent state laws that dealt with tenant protections, facilitating adequate housing opportunity sites that also align with the specific plan areas, potential streamlining opportunities for co-compliant housing projects, continuing to make updates to how we require and incentivize affordable housing, and staff is currently working on updates to the existing inclusionary housing and density bonus regulations, and potential opportunities to incentivize creation of more enforced housing units in the city. So these are just some examples. It's not necessarily exhaustive, and again, we'll come back with a draft when we have that available. So another key component of the housing element is the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA. The RENA allocation is mandated by state housing law as part of this periodic process, and the RENA quantifies the need for housing by affordability that each city and county in the state must show for within a planning period. The RENA really requires the community to plan for its fair share or allocation of regional projected housing need over this eight-year period. And the RENA allocation for Burbank was determined to be 8,751 housing units for this upcoming sixth cycle, again, which extends through 2021 through 2029. And for reference, the fifth cycle allocation was 2,684 housing units. It's worth noting that nearly all, if not all, jurisdictions in the state experienced an increase in the RENA for this cycle. So to expand on this, on the RENA a little bit, the RENA again establishes the affordability level targets for new housing in addition to the quantity. And this image shows a breakdown of Burbank's allocation by affordability level. So of the 8,751, according to Burbank's RENA allocation, 3,384 of those units should be for households that qualify as above moderate income, 1,406 for households that qualify as moderate income, 1,415 for low-income households, and 2,546 for very low-income households or lower. And for reference, housing is considered affordable if it consumes no more than 30% of household income. The thresholds for each of these income levels are updated annually using federal and state income definitions, and if there are more questions about those numbers, we can provide that in the question and answer. And Exhibit 8 to the staff report included additional information on the fifth cycle. And just to note that staff did go to the city council in December to provide an overview of the sixth cycle RENA, and that staff report and exhibits were provided in Exhibit 2 for this evening. So in addition to the RENA, to kind of expand upon that, compliant housing elements must also include an inventory of land, known as the site inventory, to address the RENA allocation. The site inventory is really a list of sites that might be suitable for new residential development according to a number of different factors. A lot of criteria applies to the identification of these sites, and staff has to provide that analysis for any site identified. And this is just some examples of some factors that have to be taken into account when identifying sites, things like existing uses, size of the site, proximity to jobs and transit, a known developer interest, or even inactive, some metal that we are currently processing. And the important thing, one of the other important things to note here is that the sites that are proposed are part of the review that HCD will do, and they'll be checking to kind of make sure that these sites look like they have realistic development potential. So this is a very general comparison of kind of what we'd be looking at in terms of identifying sites from the existing, compared to the existing housing element versus what we would be looking at for the sixth cycle. I know the map on the left is a little bit small, but it's really just to give a big-picture sense of what was identified for the fifth cycle, as you can hopefully see, a lot of the sites were sort of primarily residential infill sites scattered around the city, a few sites also in the downtown area, but primarily multifamilies and properties. So in this next cycle, what we'd be looking at, and this is consistent again with council housing goals and some of the earlier points noted in the presentation, the big-picture approach is that we would be looking to identify the majority of these sites within the specific plan areas, so namely, the Golden State Burbank Center Plan, which will be updated, and the Media District Plan Area. And another benefit of this approach is that it also helps us achieve our goal of creating consistency across these long-range planning documents. So that's sort of a summary of the housing element requirements. I just want to touch briefly on some of the other general plan updates that we're looking at, as I mentioned at the beginning. So one of them is for the safety element. The safety element is another required element of the general plan, and really looks at reducing potential short- and long-term risks posed by potential environmental hazards such as seismic, landslides, liquefaction, or other geologic events, flooding and fire, deals with evacuation rates and that sort of thing. So the state has passed several legislative measures in recent years to ensure that the safety element explicitly incorporates climate change adaptation considerations and local planning, and namely through, this was through Senate Bill 379, which requires cities to address climate change resiliency planning by first identifying what are the jurisdiction's primary climate change vulnerabilities, potentially such as fire, flooding hazards, and then creating goals, policies, and programs aimed at addressing those vulnerabilities. So staff is working with a consultant who will be providing kind of a next-step assessment of this, in addition to the preliminary analysis that was provided in Exhibit 1 from the initial assessment, and will have the opportunity to work with Burbank Fire Department staff and Building and Safety staff to prepare a draft of that, which will also have the feedback by CalFire, and to ensure that we're meeting all of the applicable requirements there. And then, the next couple slides are just going to touch on an overview of the new required environmental justice component. So the state is also requiring that cities consider environmental justice and local land use planning. This requirement is triggered through Senate Bill 1000, and it provided that upon the next revision to two or more elements of the general plan, a city would have to address this requirement as well. So because we're updating the housing element, which in turn is triggering the update to the safety element, we're also, that's why we're also looking at SB 1000. Environmental justice can mean different things to different people, but for the purposes of SB 1000, it generally is defined as the fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people regardless of race, color, national origin, or income with respect to the development, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws, regulations, and policies. So really, the goal of environmental justice in this context is to prevent the development of environmental policies that unfairly or disproportionately impact communities that would be considered disadvantaged through this lens. And the State Office of Planning and Research does provide guidelines for this. Again, it is new, so we are using the tools and resources that are available with the consultant to meet this requirement. The first step really per SB 1000 is in addressing environmental justice is to identify what communities in the city would be considered disadvantaged, or sometimes referred to as environmental justice communities. Some examples of how disadvantaged communities can be identified include seeing if the community, if the neighborhood or different areas have differences in exposure to pollution burden, disproportionately lower income levels, higher instances of health issues, less access to healthy food, older households, potentially linguistic isolation, and other factors. One, I mentioned that the state has some tools and guidelines, and one of these is the map on the right, which is called the CalEnviron Spring Map, and this is a tool available to help cities understand how to kind of begin to make sense of this requirement as it might apply in their jurisdiction. So this map kind of takes into account these different factors, and the ones shown in red are considered to have the highest, considered to be environmental justice communities per this assessment. Now, the important caveat here is that this is just a starting point, and the state emphasizes that this is not necessarily a perfect tool, it's just to kind of help get started. So we're looking at this a little bit more closely to see if there's any adjustments that would need to be made. Okay, and we're coming to the end here. As noted earlier, the housing element and related general plan update process includes a public outreach component. This effort is ongoing, but we just wanted to highlight some of the efforts that have been undertaken so far to solicit public input on this. We held stakeholder meetings in August, one focused on sort of a developer community, one focused more on a service provider community to talk about some of these housing issues. We hosted the first informational community workshop in October. There were about 20, 25 people in attendance, and the summary notes from both the stakeholder meeting and workshop were provided in Exhibit 3. We made available an online housing element and a environmental justice survey, which we posted in English, or Eastern Armenian, and Spanish. And currently, we're going through the responses. We just closed the survey recently. There were about 224 survey responses, so that information will also be provided when we come back to the board. And then, just to mention this previously, noted we held a council study session, and we have also been maintaining a project with Exhibit 1. And then finally, this slide is just a brief outline of the remaining next steps necessary to keep on track with the strict timeline of the state. We are planning a second community workshop, which is anticipated for February or March, and this will focus on the sites inventory that we spoke about, not exclusively, but that will kind of be the focal point. And around the same time, we're going to be initiating the required environmental review process pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act or CECL. We will report back to the planning board and the city council when we have a kind of a draft document ready to send to HCD. And then, we will look to have final adoption hearings in September, October, with certification slated for October 2021. And then we will look to have final adoption hearings in September, October with certification slated for October 2021. So I know we've covered a lot in this presentation, but to conclude, staff recommends that the planning board note and file. Note and file and provide input on the state required Burbank 2035 general plan, housing and safety element updates, including new requirements for environmental justice. And this concludes staff's presentation and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frank. Does the board have any questions or of staff or comments?
I have a question.
Question, how do you?
Question for staff. How do we provide our comments on the housing elements that's being filed? Because I remember that the recommendation is to not to participate in the public meetings. So do we just email our comments or do we talk about the comments here?
So there's, there's two things. Tonight's report was really an update just to tell you where we're at in the process. But as a commission tonight, you can provide us with input. So you have the opportunity to do that as a commissioner while we're having the meetings. There'll be a follow-up meeting where you actually will see the document itself and provide comments as a group. Separate from that, as a private citizen, you can also provide comments. But most of the discussion and what you're going to be seeing is really dependent on the, the draft document when it comes before you as a board. And those will be the, the, the comments that we formally put together and provide those with the recommendation from you all to counsel for consideration of adoption of the housing element. Because ultimately you're an advisory body to them as they consider approving the document and authorizing us to submit it to the state for review and hopefully eventually them certifying the document.
So we can actually discuss or talk about the comments that we want to be included or be considered as a part of the housing element?
In your capacity currently as members of the board, we are actually asking you, in addition to receiving what's been presented tonight, if you have que, if you have comments or things that you'd like us to look at as we're further developing the document, by all means, we're very interested in hearing that feedback.
Sure. So I have a couple of questions that, that's for staff. On the RHNA highlights, there was like numbers for units available per income. Is, is that, are those numbers for Burbank?
Yes, thank you, Chair Hadi, or Board Member Hadi, I'm sorry, I'm trying to multitask. I was going to share my screen again so I could pull up that slide. Okay, and it was this slide you're referring to?
Yes, this, this is for Burbank only, right?
That's correct. This is for Burbank and every city or jurisdiction in the state receives their own Rena allocation.
And these are the available units or units required and needs to be built?
What this represents is really how many housing units we have to make available through or through zoned capacity within the city. So, and this is really the minimum. This is possible that we could provide a list of sites that show you, we, we meet the eight thousand some units, but HCD might think for one reason or another or based on their criteria that it might not fly. So if they cut any sites from the list, we, we, we really would also want to have a buffer and that's something that the consultant is also recommending. But in a nutshell, yet what it represents is zoned capacity that exists in the city and then also specifically what sites might be suitable for that.
So it has two layers of filter. One is by the site eligibility and one, the number of residents per site per the development that would be created on that site, right?
Yes, if you could repeat that one more time just to make sure.
Let's say for moderate income, we see fourteen hundred and six units. This, this is based on the available sites that will, let's say that this is based on like ten acres of land and from that ten acres, fourteen hundred and six units will be created for moderate income families.
Correct, correct. So each site, when you kind of add it all up, would have to accommodate the number and by affordability level. And there's different ways that the state kind of looks at how you identify a site as being suitable for affordable housing. For, for instance, what sort of density is allowed on that site? One thing that they have made clear in the sort of guidebook that they provided is that a site with a lower density wouldn't necessarily be a good site for affordable housing because, because of the cost to build affordable housing, it's unlikely a developer would pursue a affordable project on such a site. So there's certain assumptions, I guess, is what I'm saying that are included in the analysis, but to answer your question, yes, that is.
So we're going to let, when we file, we will actually notifying the state that these are the number of units that we can create in Burbank.
Correct.
I have another question. On the format of affordability, affordable housing and its relationship with the income, how do we clarify that? Because if the, the affordable housing is rental, then we know it's low, very low or moderate. But on the moderate, moderate income, if it's less than the individuals, which like average income is probably higher than the defined moderate income for rental, affordable rental, how, what recommendations are provided for affordable rental housing?
I'm gonna attempt to answer the question, but I, I might not fully, so I may.
I'll make it simple. Let, let's say that an individual with sixty to seventy K income per year is looking for an affordable housing in City of Burbank. And the income limits for moderate affordable housing for rental units are much less than that number. And then that individual would automatically fall into the category to just go out and rent something, which takes away considerable portion of the, the income received. There is a gap here and I want to know if anything has been recommended to cover that gap. And, and the same question for, for sale. There is, I don't know if there is any recommendation by the city for any assistance program being offered by the city or if city is part, as a part of this housing element, is participating in any state or county assistance programs. That's also something that I need to know. Let, let's say County of Los Angeles has down payment assistance program. I don't know if some, some cities file and become a participant. I don't know if Burbank is participating in that program or any other similar program as a part of this housing element.
Well, one thing, thank you for the questions. One thing I would say, and Fred or any others, just feel free to chime in after, but as far as potential programs, I think you mentioned down payment assistance, that's something that we are trying to look at through the programs. The city currently works with residents to qualify for Section 8 vouchers and, and other such assistance programs that do exist, although I know they're strained and limited. And I don't have Housing Division staff here with me, but when we come back, we can, we can make note of any, any additional information that Housing Division staff might have to the effect. But in terms of the affordability levels, the, the thresholds, really what, what this chart is looking at and it's not necessarily in perfect alignment with what the need might, might be. The, the income levels are, or what's considered low, very low and moderate are sort of based around an LA county median. And then there's adjustments made, further adjustments beyond that that are accounted for, for a higher cost of living counties such as Los Angeles. So I think it's sort of, it's a, it's generalized for the, the county. So that's what, in order for a unit to officially qualify as being very low, low or moderate, it has to meet those specified income limits. But as to the actual incomes of, of households and people seeking housing, this is really just a best kind of estimate based on these projections as to what, what need might exist in Burbank over this period. So it's, it's not necessarily a perfect indicator, but it's supposed to be, this, this number is developed with a methodology that the, the regional government is required to create based on jobs in the city, based on transit, based on household and population growth and other factors, something like that. So I'm not sure if if anyone else wants to add, but.
Lisa, I can chime in while this speaker is really, the mic is really loud, but a couple of things. So there is, under the Rena, there are established thresholds. So in the case of like very low income, it's qualified as being those units that are fifty percent of the county area median income. And then based on whether it's a rental or a market rate unit, there's a certain amount of what they, what they qualify to say is deemed to be like thirty percent of your income going towards the payment, whether it's for rent or for your mortgage. And that establishes a certain set of criteria or thresholds upon which they then define the different number of units that are allocated in the different income categories. So there's, there's kind of meeting the letter of the law and what's required to be built per the Rena process. But what you're touching on is those situations with, even with the requirements of establishing a benchmark, there's the reality of what's happening out in the real world and that is that a lot of people are finding themselves having to spend more money than the thirty percent of their income towards being able to secure housing when they can. Because right now we have a jobs to housing imbalance of three to one. So there are going to be situations like you've mentioned where there is potential need to, to seek out additional funding sources to fill that gap between the amount of money necessary to secure a rental or a residential for sale unit and how much of your income. And if we want to keep at that thirty percent threshold, then it's either down payment assistance or some other gap funding for people that are low income to be able to meet their rents and stay at that level. But those are things that, we don't have an answer for you now per se. But when we look at development of the programs in the actual housing element, there'll be some recommendations to the board and to council to consider those. So whether it's down payment assistance or looking at the county and potentially pools or other entities that can maybe draw funding sources to assist locally with that or other drivers to reduce the cost for housing. Those are the kind of things that we'll be looking at. So we, we don't have an answer now. But when the programs are developed and presented in the draft form, that'll be a time when we'll be looking at that. So you bring up a good point. Those are things to look at and that's something that we'll consider as we develop the housing element draft document.
Thank you. Also, the same for the employees of service, services that belong to City of Burbank, let's say City, Fire, Police Department, School District. Does City of Burbank, if there is going to be any assistance program, does City provide those programs or each department will actually consider kind of assistance program for their employees?
I'll, I'll chime in and Lisa, you can always add. The one thing I can say, Burbank Unified School District is a separate entity from the city. So I'm not sure if they have individual programs where they provide some funding to teachers to stay locally. But we did hear during the community meetings an interest for the city to look at whether there be the possibility of establishing a program and of course, funding a program for, you know, like, you know, Fire and Police and other employees within the city to basically be able to access resources or tap resources to assist with either purchase of a home in the city or, or other, you know, or residing in the city through a rental. So those are things that have been brought up during public comment and it's something we can look at. And like anything, it's all depending on resources, right? And right now with COVID and everything else, there's a scarcity of resource. So it's going to be one of those things where board can make recommendations, community can make recommendations and the council ultimately has to weigh where it puts its resources to fund day-to-day operations and then the long-term goals. So that is a good point that you're bringing up and something that we can look at as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from Board Members? Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I don't see anything here for public comment. Did we need to have public comment before we go to the second report?
Let me double check here. And Joe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I would suggest that because we do have, we, we have presented the item. I know there's comments at the end of the agenda, but is it within their purview if they want to solicit comments to?
So the proper procedure would be before they entertain the motion, the decision they're being asked to make is note and file this evening. And that is consideration of the item. So the public should have an opportunity to speak.
So to that point, Chair, if you want to make an announcement that now is the time, if there aren't any other comments from the board, to give an opportunity to the public that has been watching or is aware of the item to provide comments to, to the board as a group.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't, I just want to make one last call for a Board Member comment or suggestions, anything?
Yes.
Okay, Board Member, do you?
I have a question. I lost feed for a second. I'm trying to get back on and it's my first. Anyway, my question is in reference to, have, have we completely abandoned the idea that perhaps all these issues come up? Because as I understand it, or as I've come to know, anything is mostly in, in commerce, which housing is commerce. Housing, people paying for housing. It's a, it, it, it's embedded in supply and demand. That's, that's where it all starts. Apparently the supply has not kept up with the demand. And I believe one of the reasons why supply has not kept up with demand is because of the, over the years, the process has been more restrictive and the ability to develop has been made more onerous on the developers. Whether that be a single family housing development, commercial, multi-residential and so on. With all these, on one side, we have all these rules and regulations to ensure safety or to promote a better stock of product. But on the other hand, the effect that it's having is it's stifling development to the extent where it's kind of come to a standstill. So the reason why I'm saying all this is because I'm trying to lay foundation for the question that I asked. Have we abandoned all efforts to try and maybe, I'm not going to say revamp, but address some of the areas of the process where we can make it easier or better, faster? Because I read some of the comments in there by people who participated and some of them did touch upon this, touch on this. What's being done in that regard? Here we are creating programs, charts, pages, money being spent on, I don't know, God knows what, but no one's addressing the initial issue. Even with all this in place, is it really going to help promote development? I don't think so. I think it just makes it more difficult. So what are we doing to just simplify the process and go back to the basics? And say, you know what, we have all these laws on the books. Do we really need all of them? So who's addressing that? Is, is that something that's being addressed? Because I Because I didn't see it anywhere, uh, in the presentation or something, uh, that's being, uh, referred to. Because we're talking about economic justice, social justice, justice everywhere. But who's addressing the code? And how is the code going to be addressed if it will be addressed?
So I can speak to that, uh, board member Otto Kenyon. Um, and it's actually, uh, the second item that's going to be considered today. So the housing element, uh, safety element, in essence, those are kind of the blueprints for the city. And they're in essence, um, a crystallization of all the community goals and aspirational things that the city wants to do. And then the zoning regulations, which the specific plans are an extension of that, are the implementation tools. So what you're going to hear a presentation after this one, where we begin that process or we have begun that process on two fronts. One is the Golden State specific plan. The other one is the downtown Burbank Transit Oriented Development specific plan. And we recently got funding for the media district specific plan update. And we're trying to get some additional funding to kind of bolster that up. So those are important because the state now requires cities to have what they call objective development standards, very clear standards, so that when a developer comes in, they understand what the expectations of the community are. And if they want to seek deviation to, um, you know, design their project in such a way so that it accommodates and maximize the opportunity to build the units that it's, you know, it's allowed to under density, uh, under a density bonus regulations or density regulations, I'm sorry. Then you have to have those things in place. In addition to that, we are evaluating the process itself through the specific plan so that we can streamline the review of projects in the future. So that every project doesn't, isn't like what it currently is right now, which is basically, we kind of Frankenstein development standards for mixed use. And we end up with a lot of planned developments or PDs, one-off projects that have to go through a process with the board and the council. The idea being that as the specific plans are updated and we get additional input from the community, that we can bring forward new objective standards with clear expectations of what community is expecting out of that, what potential benefits, um, can be brought forth. And then what kind of concessions or modifications developers can seek, knowing full well what the trade-offs are going to be. In other words, if you ask for X, then maybe you have to provide community benefit Y. So that is forthcoming and that's the process that we're currently underway and should be completed towards the end of this year or the first quarter of next year. So that's, that's the, the how, the how, how are we addressing the issue that you tend to deal with right now? In addition to that, and parallel to our process, the state has updated density bonus regulations and actually in and of itself has actually streamlined and limited what cities can do with certain types of developments. They've even increased the density and they've allowed for developers to ask for certain incentives, waivers and concessions. So it's a two-pronged process that's happening. It's what is coming down from the state as a mandate, but then also us trying to be proactive with the council and you all is we're trying to also develop the specific plans, bring them up to date, recalibrate them, allow for streamlining, but do some, do it in a way that we still protect and help to build neighborhoods locally and maintain local control. So a long answer, but it's, it's a two-part process. It's the policies in the housing element, uh, in alignment with state law. And then also the offshoots, which are the implementation tools, which are the specific plans that are coming forward. And then of course, updating and reevaluating our R1 and multifamily zoning regulations, which are also part of the process, but I've only have a certain number of staffing personnel to do all these things. So, uh, it's, it's going to be a process that happens over the next year or so.
I, I appreciate the reply, but, uh, i- if you recall, when the state implemented the ADU, uh, I guess they started the ADU program. Initially, there was a requirement, there had to be a recording, a deed against the deed that the landlord or the property owner was, uh, to be on the property. And that was later removed. Because apparently it became a difficult, you're trying to implement something to try and promote something, but then they saw that as a hindrance to trying to make it, uh, to promote it. So I would love to see what the city is doing in terms of what modifications, uh, is being made in the code and in the process itself to facilitate, uh, development. Uh, people have to live in houses or shelters, uh, whether it be in a, a box or whatever it may be. But trying to get from having nothing to having something there where someone can actually use it and live in, there's a million codes and rules we have to go through. Uh, developers or people who want to build even a simple addition to a house. So thi- thi- this is where I'm coming from, where, um, it's the process, I, I mean, I have a neighbor, he's still trying to get his permit for his ADU, trying to sort it out. Uh, it, it's, it's not, a- a- and it's been nine months. So, um, long story, as you said, it's a, it's, my fear is all these things are happening because of one simple problem from the beginning. And that is the issue of regulation was not addressed. One regulation piled on another. And we're down the road here today, finding ourselves behind the eight ball, saying we don't have enough housing. Uh, and not to mention the other element, uh, where all these groups, uh, come against development. I can understand and appreciate that, you know, people don't want certain things in certain places and so forth. But we as ones who are entrusted with this obligation or responsibility, I think we need to chime up and say, what are we doing about making sure that we're meeting our obligations? We can't just pile on one regulation after another and then expect people to just step in and say, yeah, I will build it. It's going to cost me $400,000 a unit to build this thing and I can only get so much money, uh, in rent. Okay, forget it. It doesn't pencil out. So that's where, that's where I'm coming from. I appreciate the reply and I wish the second part was presented before the first part. So I wouldn't have to go through this process, but the question stands for part two.
Thank you, board member Otto Kenyon. Uh, before board member Rosati, you speak, I, I think I saw, um, Deputy City Attorney, Mr. McDougal, did you want to speak?
Yeah, um, um, directly on point to board member Otto Kenyon's, uh, question. Our current housing element has goal number four with three policies. Goal number four is constraints on housing. Burbank will address governmental constraints to the maintenance improvement and development of housing. Policy 4.2 is regulated review the city zoning code to ensure it facilitates uses that meet the needs, uh, of special needs households. Provide opportunities, uh, policy 4.3, provide opportunities for new housing types, including small lot, single family development, uh, live work units and mixed use residential development. So the current housing element, and I suspect once you see the text, uh, this new cycle, um, cycle six housing element will have a section in it that address, addresses constraints to housing. Further, uh, as Ms. Frank indicated, this housing element requires an inventory and the state is getting stricter and stricter, uh, on what sites qualify to be in the inventory. They can't be sites that require rezoning. They have to be sites that can presently support the development of housing. So you'll see before you, when you get the draft element, there should be a discussion of constraints on housing uh, that will highlight, you're free to identify other constraints, other, other regulations that you believe, um, impede the development of housing, keeping in mind that you're the first line in the delicate balance of determining what's, what's protecting the quality of life and what's, um, allowing the flow of new development applications. Um, and, and all of you know that balance, balancing act very well. But that issue, uh, will be directly addressed. Now, um, to Mr. Ramirez's point, um, staffing, uh, is needed. He has a number of backlog projects like, um, uh, development standards for mixed use places where there's so many efforts underway in parallel. This effort moves ahead of others because it is a state mandate that can have consequences to the city if it doesn't adopt a housing element. But there are many efforts, including the specific plan that they'll be discussing this evening that actually reshape the regulations to incentivize development that is in line with the city's goals for those areas. So it is two-pronged, but constraints as, as, uh, board member Otto Kenyon addresses them certainly should be addressed in the housing element. And then specific plans and development standards that Mr. Ramirez referenced are certainly, uh, the implementation.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. Board member Rosati?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. It, I want to say it was probably this time last year to, uh, start to Kenny's point, that, uh, I was encouraged by members of council to make the motion to put on a future agenda to streamline the process, to help developers develop, to help developers assemble properties, to, uh, to take some of the ragtag properties that we have in Burbank and assemble them and make small, medium-sized developments. And, and to streamline the process and somehow come up with a hierarchy of incentives. So whether they be tax incentives or incentives from the city or the county or the state. Obviously, you know, I think COVID sidetracked some of that. But we did have the very conversation here almost a year ago, probably to the month, that these were the things that were hindering us meeting numbers and causing the state to take away our local control. So I, 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 I remember that conversation clearly. I remember the motion. I made it. And I think we need to, we need to get there and we need to get this in an agenda form to our council so that we can, we can strip away some of the, the hindrances that, that, that are happening. And, and it's only getting worse because a year ago, property was a lot cheaper than it was today. So the cost of a property, uh, for a developer and for him to develop is getting tougher and tougher. So the slower we move, the, the more possible the situation's becoming. Thank you.
Thank you, board member Rosati. Is that something that you'd want to bring up, um, in a future agenda?
I don't know. I did, I did a year ago. We, we never saw it. So I.
Okay. Maybe.
I don't know. Maybe it's something that we should, maybe it's something we should discuss in a future agenda. I mean, look, if we want to get, if we.
So this is the housing element study session. So we should keep it on the housing element.
I'm just making, I'm just.
Yeah. So that's maybe at the end of the agenda.
Right.
Brief.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Future item.
Yep. Board members have any other comments?
Just one last question. So, um, this is going to, this is a question for staff. Um, when we filed, you're going to have another community meeting in February and, um, by having the final comments, uh, when do we hear the final, uh, filed report?
Yes, um, we are planning a second community workshop for end of February or very early March. And that timeline is important for the overall state certification timeline. It's, it's in play. So what we would be looking to do is before we come back, before we even submit to the state a draft, um, which they, for which they provide a kind of a 60-day initial review, um, and comment, we would come back to the board and council to review that draft before it gets submitted for the first time around. And so that's in addition to the, the final hearings for that.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no further board comment than I. Sorry, I'd like to open public comment, uh, for this report, which, uh, is our study session on the, um, state required updates to the board. Excuse me, the Burbank 2035 General Plan Housing and Safety Elements and New Environmental Justice Component. If you would like to write public comment, comments are limited to three minutes. And if you want to participate, you can call 818-238-3335. And the phone lines are now opens and it may take a few minutes for us to get the first caller through. So, um, please bear with us and, um, please let me know, Mr. Ramirez, uh, if we have any callers on, on the line. Thank you.
We'll do that. If we can give it a minute or two, just to give people an opportunity to call in and, um, go from there. Um, Chair, it's been two minutes since, uh, you made the announcement and, uh, looks like we don't have anybody on the line to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Um, with no public comment on report number one, uh, we'll move to report number two, which is a study session to provide an update of what completed to date on the Golden State specific plan. The city initiated long-range planning effort that is re-envisioning the city's Golden State district. Will the representative of the community development department please introduce yourself and summarize report for us?
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. I'm Daniel Vio, the City of Burbank Community Development Department. Tonight I will be providing an update on the city's ongoing efforts regarding the Golden State specific plan. I apologize in advance for the longer presentation. Please bear with me. So let me go and share my screen. Madam Chair, can you see the PowerPoint on the screen?
I can, thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, are you, are you in present mode? It looks like I can see if you added notes in there. So I'm not sure if. It's a little.
Is that better?
Yes, that's it.
Perfect. Thank you. Let's begin with a quick overview of the project. The Golden State specific plan is a city-initiated long-range planning project that would create a long-term vision for the city's Golden State district that is supported by policies, development and design standards, as well as mobility and infrastructure plans. As part of the specific plan, the city will be analyzing potential environmental impacts associated with the plan implementation. Let's briefly go over some planning jargon. So what is a specific plan? A specific plan is a comprehensive planning and zoning document for a specified geographic area of the city. It implements the general plan by providing a special set of development standards and implementation measures that future projects located within the specified geographic area most adhere to. Samples of specific plans include the city's Burbank Center Plan, as well as the city's Burbank Media District specific plan. As Mr. Ramirez mentioned earlier today, amongst other things, specific plans provide city, the city, an opportunity to set in stone objective standards that can hopefully aim, uh, at facilitating and streamlining the development of housing. Before getting into some of the project specifics about the plan, let's briefly cover the general project workflow so we all know what's happened already, as well as what we can expect moving forward. Work on the specific plan has been divided into four phases. Phase one is discovery and analysis. This phase has been completed. During this phase, we looked at the existing conditions in the specific plan study area. Following there's phase two, establishment of a vision and guiding principles. This phase has also been completed. Having provided that brief introduction, let's go over the boundaries of the specific plan study area, so that we're on the same page regarding what properties are within the specific plan. The specific plan study area is generally bounded by Cohasset Street and the five freeways to the north, Buena Vista to the east, Van Owen and Pacific to the south, and generally the Hollywood Burbank Airport to the west. The specific plan study area is also very transit-rich and includes, or is transit-rich and includes, amongst other things, the Hollywood Burbank Airport, two MetroLink stations, and a proposed future high-speed rail station. Generally, the study area currently includes a mix of uses that include media and tech, light and heavy industrial, retail, hotel, and office, as well as existing single-family and multifamily neighborhoods. This residential neighborhood is shown in yellow on the slide. It is to the west of Buena Vista. Some brief background on the history of the district or the study area. Home to Lockheed from the 1940s to the 1990s. It has been traditionally seen as one of the city's industrial hubs and a major employment center. With Lockheed's departure in the 1990s, there was a slowdown in activity within the district. However, in more recent years, this area has experienced a resurgence and has evolved to have an eclectic mix of commercial, office, media, industrial, and tech businesses. As of 2017, it was home to approximately 15,000 jobs and also 3,500 residents. Having provided that brief background, let's broadly cover some of the existing conditions in the specific plan area. Generally, the study area is made up of large blocks that are auto-oriented and reflect the industrial history of the district. Further, the lock coverage is generally low, as properties are undeveloped and underdeveloped and have larger surface parking lots. For reference purposes, in order to maximize pedestrian accessibility and walkability, block sizes should ideally range between 300 to 400 feet. As can be seen on the screen, a majority of them, or a lot of them, are over 1,000 square feet in length. These images on the screen show some of the existing industrial buildings. These images on the screen show some of the existing residential buildings. And these images on the screen show some of the existing streets and sidewalks within this area. Having covered some of the existing conditions, let's now go over some of the planning considerations that have been flagged as we continue working through the specific plan. These considerations include the city's existing jobs-to-housing imbalance of three to one, city council's goal of facilitating the development of 12,000 units citywide by 2035, the arena requirement that the city prefer 8,751 new units within the next eight years, market conditions that show a strong housing demand and a low commercial and industrial vacancy, and also the need for thoughtful integration of the proposed high-speed rail station, as well as the proposed airport terminal with the rest of the Golden State District or the study area. Additionally, given the study area's proximity to the Burbank-Colliewood Airport, there are airport-related restrictions that we need to be cognizant of or consider throughout the drafting of the plan. These include runway protection zones, noise contours, and height restrictions. These limit the location and intensity of certain uses, as well as the height of buildings within certain parts of the district. These parts are generally shown in yellow on the screen, as well as pink, purple, and also a red line. Having gone over the planning considerations, let's move on to the specific plan vision and guiding principles. Before sharing these, I just want to note that these were established as part of a collaborative effort that included vetting through the city council, district-wide stakeholders, the general public, and city staff. I'd like to thank everyone who participated in the numerous meetings, as well as workshops that led to, again, this vision and guiding principles. The vision is as follows: a vibrant economic center and transportation hub that facilitates the preservation of existing key industries while creating new opportunities for housing and jobs with an elevated sense of arrival from the Hollywood Burbank Airport, MetroLink stations, and future high-speed rail station. I'll leave it on the screen for a second. All right, moving on, as part of establishing a vision, I also went ahead and established guiding principles for the district. These, in essence, are meant to guide the drafting of standards, the drafting of the plan, and these are, in essence, things that will lead to established policies in the specific plan. These guiding principles include that we prioritize and leverage the district's transportation assets, that we support the airport, that we balance jobs and housing, that we build neighborhoods, that we support the district as an economic engine, that we create well-designed neighborhoods, that we support a mix of housing types, affordability, and unit sizes, that we foster resilient, sustainable district, that we encourage a unique district identity, and finally, that we improve safe, multimodal connections throughout the district. And again, these guiding principles will be used to establish policy throughout the specific plan documents. Having established the vision and guiding principles, city staff has begun work on establishing a draft preferred land use alternative that would establish land use policy throughout the district. Versions of this draft land use plan have previously been shared with the city council, as well as the general public. It has more recently been refined and updated to include feedback received at several city council study sessions, as well as community workshops. In line with the vision and guiding principles, the land use alternative attempts to balance the different citywide and district-wide needs by identifying opportunities for new housing, primarily in close proximity to transit, facilitating responsible development in a manner that builds and protects existing residential neighborhoods, being supportive of existing longstanding industrial uses, for example, crane aerospace and electronics, accommodating for a balanced mix of commercial, media, and industrial uses, providing additional resident and employee-serving amenities, for example, restaurants and other neighborhood-serving uses, and also considering responsible development that is complementary to the airport and which considers airport-related restrictions. Not including the existing park, school, and airport uses, there are a total of seven new land uses identified in this alternative that would be included as part of the Golden State District. Having gone over it very briefly, let's now go over each land use in more detail. First, there is the land use of mixed-use TOD. This land use would focus on mixed-use development that includes residential with offices, retail, restaurants, and other commercial types within half a mile of transit. And it's shown in purple on the screen. Examples of what this can look like are shown on the images. The envisioned density would be 120 dwelling units per acre, 120 dwelling units per acre, as well as a floor-area ratio that ranges between 2.0 and 4.5. I'll leave the slide on the screen for a second so you can look at the images. Next is a commercial and TOD flex land use. This land use would focus on compatible airport and high-speed rail-adjacent commercial uses, like restaurants and other employment-generating uses. And these are shown in pink or peach on the screen. Examples of this can look like the image shown on the screen. Residential would not be allowed. The envisioned floor-area ratio is 2.75. And again, I'll leave the screen on the... I'll leave the light on the screen, slide on the screen, so you can look at the different images. Next is the mixed-use corridor land use. This land use would include a mix of uses that support the existing cluster of industrial, retail, and office uses. Uses allowed would include both residential and commercial-type uses. Lower intensity is envisioned north of Empire, adjacent to existing residential, and along San Fernando, while higher intensity is envisioned south of Empire. And they're shown in pink on the screen. Examples of this can look like the image shown on the screen. Residential density would range between 58 to 100 dwelling units per acre, and there would be a floor-area ratio that would range between 1.25 and 2.0 FAR. Next are the Golden State Employment and Makers District. The Golden State Employment land use would focus on preserving the existing industrial employment sectors. In these areas, we envision having light industrial, heavy industrial. We would envision allowing for media-type uses, office, so on and so forth. And the Makers District land use would focus on providing amenities and neighborhood-serving uses within this employment area. And the lighter blue is the Golden State Employment land use, and in the darker blue is the Makers District. As mentioned, the intent of the darker blue is to facilitate neighborhood-serving uses, such as restaurants and other neighborhood-serving amenities, which are currently lacking in this district. From interviews we've had with employers within the district, they've in many cases noted that many of their employees actually drive either to the Burbank Empire Center or to downtown Burbank, or even further beyond that, for lunch, given that there is a lack in amenities in the area. Examples of what this can look like are shown on the images on the screen. Residential would be allowed. The envisioned floor-area ratio would range between 1.25 to 1.75. And finally, there are single-family and multifamily residential land uses, or these are the single-family... Finally, there is existing single-family and multifamily residential land uses. Consistent with the goal of preserving existing residential neighborhoods, density and intensity in these existing residential neighborhoods would remain unchanged between 14 to 43 dwelling units per acre. However, staff will look at ways of improving the single-family and multifamily standards to be able to streamline and facilitate the development of housing. Again, at this time, we are simply focusing on general land use policy. It is through the draft specific plan document that will come to you in the future that we'll be able to identify how we can streamline housing, as well as identify what the development standards would look like. Having said that, though, I think tonight, it's a good time to... It's a good opportunity for us to begin the discussion with regards to what the board wants us to prioritize, and one of those things can be focusing on ways of streamlining Here we see again the draft land use alternative. Again, this has been drafted so that it is in line with the vision and guiding principles, and so that it prioritizes housing near transit while preserving existing industries, as well as neighborhoods. And I'll leave it on the screen for a second. So going on to next steps and what's next. Staff is currently working on putting together a draft specific plan and environmental document. Feedback received today will further inform our ongoing efforts and will be included in the draft document. It is anticipated that staff will have draft documents that will be vetted through the planning board, the city council, and the public before the summer of this year, at which point, we will come back before the board for another study session to go over that draft document and discuss further. The specific plan has an anticipated completion date of December 2021. As previously referenced, the purpose of this report is to update board members on work to date on the specific plan, ahead of future meetings that will be... in which we will be going over draft specific plan documents. Having said that, this concludes staff's presentation. We'll be available to take any feedback and/or answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Rosati?
Daniel, thank you for your presentation. Curious, do you have like an approximate number of how many units you can squeeze in that little Golden State area, given the airport, the restrictions? And do you have like a sense of desirability of people wanting to live in that area?
Yes, thank you, Planning Board Member Rosati. So to answer your first question, yes, we have... We do have a consultant that we are working with, AECOM, and they have given us an approximate number of units that we expect to have in this area with this draft land use alternative. And they are envisioning a range of between 2,500 to 4,000 units, depending, of course, on how we draft our development standards. To your second question about whether there is the appetite for housing there, or there is the appetite to... for people wanting to live there, I will say this. Throughout the past year, we have had a number of developers come to us interested in building housing in this Golden State District, specifically towards the southern part of the district and also towards the northern part, so along Cohasset and also along where Hollywood Way and Empire are located. And they have informed us in many times that there is a great need for housing and that there is a demand there. So I hope that answers your questions.
It answers my questions. It also brings up something interesting to me, and it goes back to something I mentioned earlier about assembling properties. Because I can tell you for a fact that there are people that have been sitting on properties there, large properties, you know, maybe an acre, maybe more, for decades. And if there was an incentive for them to turn them over to developers or develop them themselves, that would be a target-rich opportunity for our city to develop housing. So I think it's important to focus on what Board Member Atukini and I were talking about is coming up with incentives, because there are people that own like entire blocks there that have been sitting there for, you know, 30, 40 years. Some of them are vacant, where if we can get them to turn those properties over from some incentive, you can have yourself a lot of units fast.
Planning Board Member Rosati, this will be less of a response, but more just of a comment, and we completely agree. I think that there are opportunities in the development standards that would be drafted in the specific plan to create incentives for developers, to encourage them, I would say, to develop sooner, but also to consolidate properties. So it is something that we'll definitely consider as we draft those development standards, and hopefully, when we bring them before you later this year, you'll see that reflected. Having said that, I completely agree with you as well. There are what I would call opportunity sites out there in the district that... in which I can envision development. For example, you have the Frye site.
And if there was an incentive for them to turn them over to developers or develop them themselves, that would be a target-rich opportunity for our city to develop housing. So I think it's important to focus on what board member Atikanyi and I were talking about is coming up with incentives because there are people that own like entire blocks there that have been sitting there for, you know, thirty, forty years. Some of them are vacant. Where if we can get them to turn those properties over from some incentive, you can have yourself a lot of units fast.
Planning board member Rosati, this will be less of a response, but more just of a comment. And we completely agree. I think that there are opportunities to, in the development standard that would be drafted in the specific plan, to to create incentives for developers, to encourage them, I would say, to develop sooner, but also to consolidate properties. So it is something that we'll definitely consider as we draft those development standards. And hopefully, when we bring them before you later this year, you'll see that reflected. Having said that, I completely agree with you as well. There are what I would call opportunity sites out there in the district that, in which I can envision development. For example, you have the Frye site, huge to develop property. That could be an opportunity. You have the Logic site right across the street on the southeastern corner of Van Owen and Hollywood Way that currently has an office building, but could also be a huge opportunity for someone to develop on. And then to the north, you have Alanco Hacit and Hollywood Way, a strip of properties that are bordering the city of LA that may also be prime for development. So to the extent that we can be able to, to both your points, facilitate and incentivize the development of housing, that would hopefully encourage the development of housing, which at this point we need for many reasons, and you've heard of some of them tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, board member Atikanyi.
Have to remember to unmute. Good evening, Daniel. My question is the numbers set for low density and high density. You know, for the high density being forty-three units, dwelling units per acre, which works out roughly to about a one per thousand, right? Is that, is that, how did we come up with that number? Is that a number that can be addressed, changed? Perhaps make it one dwelling unit for every eight hundred square feet? Is that, is that something that can be worked on? That would be, that would just boosted by twenty percent automatically?
Yeah, no, thank you for the question. And let me share my screen really quick, just so I can go over a couple of things with you in response to that. So just bear with me while I share my screen. Chair, can you see the PowerPoint on the screen?
Yes, it's not in the presentation mode, though, so you might want to.
Okay.
I can still see it, like in the notes section.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so planning board member Atikanyi, just in response to your question. So we are looking at densities that are a little bit different throughout the district. So what do I mean by that? If you look at these darker purple areas that are on the screen, for example, towards the south, there's very dark purple. And you see that kind of, bear with me, my computers deciding to move on me. This darker, this darker purple that's spread out throughout the district. In those areas, we are right now looking at densities of a hundred and twenty dwelling units per acre. Just for context, existing, we have densities of fifty-eight units per acre. So we are looking at doubling density. And why are we doing it so high in this purple area? The reason for that is these areas that are in purple are in closer proximity to transit. So what the, what the intent is, and we're doing this intentionally, is we're hoping to focus most of the new housing away from existing residential neighborhoods. The orange and yellow and away from the residential neighborhoods, so we can protect those, but also closer to transit, to be able to facilitate people living in closer proximity to transit. Having gone over that, there is also this pink that I'm hovering over right now along Empire and Buena Vista and Hollywood Way. In that pink area, we are looking at densities of, in this area, we're looking at densities of fifty-eight per acre to a hundred dwelling units per acre. And again, similar reasons. These are somewhat in closer proximity to transit, but also somewhat further away from residential, the existing residential neighborhoods. And again, those densities are a little bit higher than where we are sitting now. And to your, to your other question, why are we leaving densities how they are, fourteen to forty per acre, in the existing residential neighborhoods? The reason for that is really policy direction that we've received from the city council as well as suburban residents. There was an interest in us city staff looking at options of focusing housing away from existing residential and leaving existing residential protected or more untouched, I would say. Having said that, we are looking at ways of facilitating the future development of smaller, less dense residential projects within these existing residential areas. For example, right now, you have to go through a longer entitlement process, what's called development review. If there's the appetite from the planning board and the council and the public, there may be the opportunity of looking at development standards that streamline the process of getting those types of permits. Instead of going through a one- to two-year entitlement process, that could be reduced to a time shorter than that. So these are all things that we're considering as part of drafting a specific plan. The intent being to increase density where it makes sense and leave those existing residential areas more protected.
Thank you for the reply, but for those areas that are less dense, and as you said, the plan is to try and maintain and protect them, would a density increase of twenty percent be detrimental to those areas, especially since the development is not just going to happen overnight? It's not just open dirt. We're talking about as it comes up, and these buildings have a life cycle of, you know, God knows how many years, at least, you know, they could go on for a hundred years, a hundred twenty years, you know, with proper maintenance and so forth. So it's not like the density, the increase in density is suddenly going to, everyone's going to demolish their place and build something that's twenty percent larger, and that's not going to happen because of the cost. So would, why wouldn't that be explored as like, just as a bonus type of a thing to all the other areas that are being, not rezoned, but I mean, the density is being increased?
Understood. And increasing density in these areas is something that we can definitely consider. With planning board direction, I think on our end, we can work with the consultants and maybe look at that as an option in the environmental document. Just for context, in the environmental document that you all see in the future, cities have to look at different alternatives and identify what the impacts of the different options or alternatives would be. So we can definitely look at higher intensity or higher density as one of our alternatives. However, having said that, something to keep in mind is that right now, people can request a density increase in these existing residential areas via what's called a density bonus. As of this year, the state, if developers do provide the appropriate affordable housing, developers can get up to a fifty percent density bonus beyond what would be allowed. So that is an option, and I would say it's a kind of a carrot on a stick approach. The carrot being the extra development, the added density. However, to be able to get that, developers have to provide what we all need, right, which is the affordable housing.
And you took the words right out of my mouth, the carrot and stick. Whereas, let's just, for the sake of discussion, tomorrow morning, we flood, and I've said this before, we flood Burbank somehow with ten thousand units. Okay?
Did we lose Mr. Atikanyi?
I think he's, his screen froze, so he might have to restart his computer on his end.
Do other board members have comments while we wait for Mr. Atikanyi? Vice Chair Hadiya.
I have a question about exhibit three dash five. Yes, actually, three dash four and five, but my question is on the mixed-use TOD. It's noted that there will be a hundred dwelling units per acre, and I just did the calculation. Each acre is forty-three thousand five sixty. And a hundred twenty units will give us a three hundred sixty-three square foot unit. That's, let's say, if three hundred sixty-three is, if one side of the unit is fifteen feet, it will be a fifteen by twenty-four feet unit. The standard bathroom, full bathroom, is five by eight. So it will leave just the living area about two hundred seventy-two. Isn't it too small if they're also considering the quality of life for the residents actually living in those units? I appreciate your explanation.
Yeah, no, thank you for the question. And I will begin just by saying that we are working with AECOM and our consultants in making sure that what we are, what we are showing you and eventually showing both you and the council for adoption. We're making sure and working with them that what we are proposing is something that is feasible. And in working with them, we have ran what are called site assessments, and we will look at properties throughout the study area and identify whether we reach these densities and intensities, both the density and also the FAR. And generally speaking, I would say that you're right, we will have some smaller units, however, we will have the ability of also fitting in larger units. The end goal being that we will not only have development that's affordable, but also that is meeting different household needs through sizing. For example, there could be needs that are not met right now for rental units that are three units in size, that are two units in size, not units, that are three bedrooms in size or two bedrooms in size. What we want to do, we want to make sure that we don't only have those three hundred square foot units you're referencing, board member, but that we diversify it. And given, given the work we've done to date, to answer your question, what I can say is that we could meet that. I will say, though, that does imply that the number of stories will increase. We are looking at stories, number of stories that range between six to ten to eleven feet in some areas of the plan that are going to be taking in this higher density and intensity.
So thank you very much, but another question will be the height limits and the height restriction because these TOD sites are right adjacent to the airport. And even if city allows the developers to go higher than like six or ten stories, there will be limitations by the airport. And we're looking at these numbers as if we do have the whole one acre or a large site. Most of the sites are probably, as you had in one of the slides, a thousand square foot or, let's say, five thousand square foot, then the only solution will be to add more stories. And in addition to the height, there will be the parking issue. Because again, when these are separate lots, each one, even if you give the incentives of TOD and less parking, there is still requirement for parking. And I think the number of units per acre and also the parking has to be carefully studied for the TOD sites.
Yeah, I completely agree, planning board member. I think parking is both a challenge, addressing parking is both a challenge and an opportunity, right? The reason I say that is when looking at parking, not only through the lens of residential, but also existing commercial, it becomes somewhat challenging because we are hoping to activate what is called the Makers District and make that more of a neighborhood-serving area in which people can have, can go to restaurants, they can go to uses during lunch that are currently not there, but the question becomes, where do they park? So as part of the specific plan document, we are going to be looking at how we can leverage some of the existing parking in the district, also known as private parking lots in this case. We're going to look at ways of leveraging that to be able to create semi-parking districts that will hopefully be able to facilitate parking throughout the district. In this case for that, what I would call the Makers District. But to your point about parking and housing, and I guess this is also where there is an opportunity. I would say that in a majority of the mixed-use projects that we've gotten to date, most of the developers have come to this and said, "City, your current parking standard, which are not meant to apply to mixed-use developments, are a little bit too high." Like, they're not a reflection of what the market parking demand really is. So there's an opportunity to visit that and to establish a true mixed-use parking standard. And not only that, but also to establish design standards that address how parking should be properly shaped from the street, whether it be through underground parking or through tucked-away parking that is behind front-facing either residential or commercial units. So to try to answer your question more briefly, we will be looking at ways of addressing parking in the district, and you'll see that reflected when we bring the document before you in the future.
Thank you.
So just for the record, we lost board member Atikanyi around approximately seven thirty, eight PM tonight. He's not joined back. I don't know, Mr. Ramirez, if he had an update of where he is?
Yes, I was going to let you know, Chair, that we just received contact from him that he's trying to restart his computer and reconnect his internet connection. So we're going to wait and see what happens with him.
Okay, no worries. Did any board members have any other comments? Otherwise, I would open it to public, Mr. Board Member Gambaola.
Yeah, a question for Daniel and staff. Regarding, I guess, kind of a couple jumping off points from some of the other board member comments. Regarding FAR, is this going to work like other planning areas like downtown where the residential uses don't count towards the FARs? Like in this case, the two FAR in the, in the mixed-use TOD?
Yes, planning board member, it would function in a similar way.
So in this case, so I guess to Vice Chair Hadiya's comment is that the density you were getting, it's not gonna, there's no limit to the FAR for those, those units. So the size isn't going to be restricted by the density. It'll be whatever, like even height, I'm looking at the Marriott right there across the street from the airport, and that's a significantly tall building for, you know, being around the airport. And considering two FARs and the density we're talking about, we're not looking at high-rises, we're not looking at, you know, massive developments or tiny micro-units or anything like that. So I think that with that incentive of not having the FAR as accounting as housing, I think that's, or the housing counting as FAR, I think that's one of those incentives that make it, you know, desirable to put housing in some of these areas. And I think adding the density is also going to create extra value for these landlord, landowners who, you know, may have been sitting out for a while to say, hey, look, I can cash out now to make this either develop myself or sell it. And I think to board member Atikanyi's comment regarding the residential areas, I think there's opportunity with the low-density residential area here is to modify these, you know, single-family area to make it, where you don't have to have such a big lot. You can still have a single-family home on half the lot, and then you get two homes on the same lot that are for sale and fee simple. Not talking about, you know, condos or, or, you know, big buildings, they can just be single-family residences on smaller lots like what you see on Chandler Boulevard, kind of the classic development of Burbank that has an opportunity to get a like little, you know, gentle infill density here. Particularly on the, already the multifamily areas, there's areas that have single-family that you noted, houses in the multifamily zone. Lots of those, if we minimize, remove those minimum floor or minimum lot sizes, we can solve some of the problem of having to consolidate so many lots, but also be able to bring in some extra units for purchase and for homeownership. So I think considering those, I think would be worthwhile, especially in this area, because it's not something that works in every other area of the city. But this is an area, this TOD plan, right there on Buena Vista that borders multifamily all around it. And I think that's a good opportunity to explore that, especially as an alternative.
Thank you, board member. Those have been noted, and we will consider that in our discussion moving forward.
Board member Atikanyi is back as of seven forty-seven PM. Welcome back. Did you want to complete your comments?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. The, Daniel, the, what I was getting at was, I guess, at the end of the day, and I was, I heard some of the comments Mr. Gambaola made, and it would have to be a multi-pronged type of a loosening or adjustment or the different codes or restrictions. a loosening or adjustment or the different codes or restrictions that are currently in place for development. And I appreciate and understand his statement. And in fact, I think it should be that way where not every area will be able to tolerate the, every single type of a loosening of, let's say, some regulation or another. Some areas will benefit from it and some will be extreme, some areas will feel the impact, detrimental impact of that loosening. So different areas with different measures, I think, to promote development, to promote growth. And I know this puts a great deal of pressure on other services that the city provides, that be the water, power, hospital, you know, police. When you increase density, obviously you're increasing the number of people, so number of incidents, number of events that take place increases. But at the same time, we need to address the basics. Because as time has gone on, I've seen the development of all these regulations, rules that have made it incredibly cumbersome and complicated to navigate through. So why don't we go back to the basics and try and address some of the basic issues and try and tweak it there first before we add on more layers of programs and whatever we're doing? So that was it. And then I think you, you don't have to answer, you know, why, because you already answered, Mr. Gamba, and I think you're going to give me the same answer that you're going to be looking at all those. Thank you.
But planning board member, I would just add, not a response, but just add to what you were saying. I would say that generally speaking, we have received similar direction from the city council. Why do I say that? We went before them with a city council, for a city council study session to talk about our debt bonus and inclusionary housing regulations. And as part of that, they were very clear to us that they want us to look at ways of facilitating our development review process because right now we have projects that are by right, and for example, density bonus projects that the cities to some extent have to approve if they meet all the objective standards. And they're going through numerous appeals processes that add a year, year and a half to the product timeline. And then all that just ends up adding time and pushing out the development of housing. So I would say that the comments you and the rest of the board have shared today or tonight are consisting with feedback you received from the council members late last year.
Madam Chair, just a quick reply or actually a comment on that. Density bonuses coming to play when, let's say, the developer can develop 10 units on a piece of parcel, right? Piece of land. And now if they want to develop 14 units, the state says or the city says, "Great, why don't you give them lower rent on those four units, make it moderate or low income or lowest income, whatever categories they've come up with, schemes they come up with to try and accommodate that." What I'm trying to say is, why don't we go to the basics where we don't have to go through that process, eliminating that entire process in of itself? Why go through density bonus processes? If you increase the stock number of product, you are going to affect the price of that product. It's almost like defeats the entire purpose of giving density bonuses, meaning I'm not going to let you develop 14 units from the get-go. I want to force you to develop 10 units, but I'll give you the four units if you charge lower rent. Well, if you let me develop the 14 units from the get-go and everybody does that, there's not going to be any need for density bonuses and bonuses of this sort, or let's play that game. No, why don't we play this game? That's the point that I'm trying to make, where the system has become a bureaucratic nightmare, where you just said it yourself, go through appeals, processes and so forth and so on. Those things came into effect because now there are these programs, these so-called incentives. They're not incentives at all, they're disincentives. So that's what I'm trying to say. Go back to the basics. We didn't end up at this level from, when someone rolls back the chapters and starts taking a look at where we were, let's say 15 years ago or 20 years ago, what the code was 15, 20 years ago and where we are today. I'm sure if you put it one next to each other, you're going to see one being maybe a three-inch binder and the other one being a 23-inch binder. So my point and my, I guess, recommendation or two cents worth to council or whomever's in this process, instead of trying to make the system more cumbersome, more convoluted, more complicated, simplify by going back to the basics. Because I think we have run out of all these flowery words, flowery concepts and flowery ways to do things. I think the basics will serve the citizens of this city and I think all over best. So that's my two cents word. Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me the time.
No problem. Mr. Rivia, did you have anything else you wanted to comment on?
No, I didn't want to say thank you, board member Atukunian, for those comments.
Great. Do we have any other, yes, Vice Chair Hadian?
Question for staff from, this is the proposed specific plan and draft preferred land use. What happens from this point on, assuming that this is approved? So somebody has a warehouse in this area and they cannot make any changes or if they decide to make any changes, they have to go with, approve the specific plan? For example, if one of the warehouses is in the TOD zones, then what happens to that property?
Planning board member, as you mentioned, this right now is in draft form. In terms of steps moving forward, what will happen is later this year, the planning board, yourself included, the city council members and the public will all have an opportunity to review and comment on more information regarding the specific plan. At some point in time, hopefully a version of the specific plan will be adopted by the city council. It's anticipated that that may happen later this year or early next year. If something is adopted, or if and when something is adopted, at that point in time, the specific plan will in essence establish all the rules to play or all the standards moving forward for properties within the specific plan. So for example, say the specific plan is adopted and then someone comes in and says, "City, I want to develop something on this property within the specific plan area." At that point in time, what we will do is we will give them a copy of the document and we will make them aware that they have to comply with all the procedures, all the processing, all the standards in that specific document. And that will dictate what they can do moving forward on that property. I hope that answers the question.
So let's say we have the specific plan approved and the owner of the warehouse on the existing zoning, which is industrial, decides to add to the warehouse or demolish and build a new warehouse. The underlying zone is still industrial and they can do that, but they will be, this is my question, will they be given the option that there is the specific plan, you can also build residential at such and such number of units per acre and these guidelines? I want to know what their options are from the moment that the specific plan is approved, if they want to make any changes to the property? Are they bound to the new approved plan or they still have right to what their property with the existing zoning is if they want to do a larger project?
I can chime in, Danny. Just I think at this point, it's a little bit speculative because we don't know what the overall list of land uses are going to be within those subcategories. Those are still being developed, so that's something that we could look at and see. But let's just assume for the moment, just for discussion, that like anything, if you're in a zoning area and the zoning changes and that use no longer is permitted, then you're what's called legal non-conforming. There's certain limitations which you operate under that. But I think it's a little premature to say that that's going to be the case because I think one of the things that's being balanced here is finding opportunities to allow for new development to happen, including residential on certain areas, but also to at the same time preserve commercial and industrial uses that make this particular area a large employment center. So it's not going to, I don't think it's going to be all or nothing. I think we're looking at how to balance that and see where there's going to be opportunities to preserve the ability to continue operation of existing industrial and commercial uses. And in those situations where someone determines whether it's through land assembly or they looked at the property and realized, you know what, the better utilization of it and the opportunities that are being provided under the new regulations allows me to look at residential as a more lucrative option, then that's what we're going to, that's would be, would be an option for them moving forward. So we'll look at all those things through this process, but you bring up a good point, that's something that will be evaluated as well.
Thank you.
Any other board comment? Okay, then I will open this to public comment. Again, public comment will be limited to three minutes and if you want to participate, you can call 818-238-3335. The phone lines are open and if you can give us a few minutes to allow for the first, any first callers to come through.
Chair, it's been two minutes and we don't have any calls in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. So public comment is now closed. Now, I just wanted to check with Mr. McDougall, the recommendations were to note and file these two reports with board member comments. Do you need a motion on that?
Yes, motion and roll call vote if the vote's not unanimous.
Okay, so, yes.
I'll move that if you'd like, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I'll move that motion if you'd like, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you very much. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hadian. If I could have a roll call vote for the motion to note and file these two reports with board member comments.
Okay. Board Member Gamba?
Yes.
Board Member Atukunian?
Yes.
Board Member Rosati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hadian?
Yes.
And Chair Lou?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we are going to move on to our next agenda item, which is oral communications. This is a time for oral communications from the public. Any persons speaking during this period may address the board on any matter concerning city business. Comments are limited to three minutes and if you'd like to participate, please call
Give it another 30 seconds. We don't have any calls in the queue right now.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. So as there, there's no public comment, I'll declare this public comment period closed. The next agenda item is approval of minutes from December 14th, 2020, planning board meeting. Are there any questions, comments or a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member Rosati. Do I have a second?
Second.
I think Board Member Gamba got the second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Board Member Gamba?
Yes.
Board Member Atukunian?
Yes.
Board Member Rosati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hadian?
Yes.
And Chair Lou?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is the introduction of additional agenda items. So planning board members may introduce new items for discussion, but no action may be taken except to place the item on a future agenda. Do board members have any items to introduce? I didn't know, Board Member Rosati, if you wanted to introduce something based on the earlier report?
I don't know. I mean, I did this a year ago. I could do it again. I'd like to see us put on a future agenda, ways to incentivize development and I think I'll just leave it as plain as that. If we could just have a good dialogue and discussion, have a staff report on how we can incentivize, when I say development, I'm talking about housing. We do have a job to housing imbalance, so I don't think we need any more jobs, we need housing. So I think all of us have some ideas that we can give our council. We keep saying that housing is a priority, so I would like us to make it a reality. And if it is a priority, then let's roll our sleeves up and do the tough work and put something together.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hadian?
I agree with Board Member Rosati and I wanted to see if in the same session or same study, we can include what Board Member Atukunian referred to by studying how we can simplify the existing guidelines and development standards. If we can review both, that would be great.
Mr. Ramirez, is there a timeframe that we can put this on a future agenda?
I have to go back and take a look at schedule. We've got a lot of stuff that's coming through, so from the discussion that I've heard, I mean, we can at least put together a memorandum probably within two months' time and bring that and that can start the discussion and we'll get your input moving forward.
And I just want to interject, and it's not a knock on staff. I know a lot has happened, COVID and, you know, ADU and COVID and, you know, ADU and, and all the other junk that's come from Sacramento, which has stressed out, but completely stressed, put a stress on our staff, so it's not a knock on staff, but I think if we wanna do the things that Sacramento wants us to do, then we're gonna need to really, again, find the time.
Thank you, Board Member Rosati. Uh, any other items from Board Members? Okay, I, I had an item that I had um spoken to um Deputy City Attorney McDougal about. Um, last, in the last session, we had um some parliamentary procedures that were, uh, I guess, we were not in uh at agreement as to what the procedures were. Um, I was operating more from a Roberts Rules of Order or Rosenberg Rules of Order, my understanding um from a conversation with Mr. McDougal, that the uh Burbank City Council and the boards and commissions do not operate under those procedural rules. So I've asked Mr. McDougal if he, on the, in the next meeting, could just give us like the basics, which um uh in terms of moving a motion and substitute motions, just so that we're all on the same page. I don't know.
Yeah, Assistant City Attorney Ian McMillan is um, intends to provide that overview for you, and I believe it will be at your next uh board meeting.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, if there's nothing else, we will move to city planner comments. Mr. Ramirez, do you have any comments?
No, I just uh thank you guys for all the input tonight, it really helped us on these two long-range planning efforts, and um in the near future, we'll be bringing the TOD specific plan as well for downtown to get an, to give you an update. Uh, and uh, as I mentioned earlier, we did receive grant funds to update the media district specific plan that hasn't been uh updated since the early nineties. So, um, we'll have to figure out who's gonna work on that one internally, but we're going after some grant funds at the end of this month as well, so um, just so you know, under the, i-if you're all interested um in the realization plan, which is part of the general plan, uh, that um I can send you that section, there are some land use policies that need to be implemented uh since the adoption of the general plan in twenty thirteen, one of which is to look at uh updating the existing specific plans, including updates to mixed-use standards and R1. I know the R1 standards were done, I think, right before I got here in twenty seventeen, so they've been in place uh for some time, duly noted the uh concerns and comments uh that have been noted regarding those regulations. Um, and what we're doing now at this point is, with finite resources, like, like you all, uh as um individuals maybe deal with at home or in your own businesses, we are um getting input from the council so that they can help us prioritize um what we can fo-, what we need to focus on. Um, one of the things has been the specific plans, but they've also requested an update on the R1 regulation, so um it's understood that that needs to come forward. Um, what we're gonna be looking at over the next couple of months is, how do we um allocate resources to that? And uh also determine what other things we can't get to if that moves up the list, so uh we'll bring something back to you all, uh, and also provide you with an update. Uh, we're at mid-year, uh, so I know the whole city's looking at the budgetary issues, so um our interests individually in the department um have to be balanced with the interests and the needs of the other departments in this process, so there'll be, you know, there'll be some trade-offs uh either way we look at this thing. But um, but like I said, once again, we really appreciate your input, I wanna uh, you know, wish all of you, if I didn't get to do it at the end of last year, uh happy new year, and um, you know, I think there's a lot of opportunities moving forward, so we always really appreciate your input, and I apologize um if at anything my face gives off a different impression of your guys' input, we, we really do appreciate it, I think it's just um, every staff member, not just in our department, but behind the scenes is, is um, uh, we are, we're burning the candle at both ends, I guess is what I'm saying, that um indicative of, you know, the last couple of weeks, I think, have been uh pretty intense, just because, you know, there's a lot of demands and, and everybody's dealing with COVID and, you know, all their fun stuff that results from that. So, uh, just like I said, thank you, thank you for your input, thank you for your support uh from everyone, really appreciate it, and we will, uh, we'll get going on the stuff that we've been directed to do, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Okay, we are now adjourning to our next online Planning Board meeting on Monday, February eighth, twenty-twenty-one at six PM. The public is invited to view the meeting online and, or on television, and will be able to participate um and provide public comment in the following two ways. The first, by leaving an e-comment on the city webpage, which is www.burbankca.gov/ecomments, or by calling in directly to the Planning Board meeting at eight-one-eight-two-three-eight-three-three-three-five. Thank you all for your participation, and have a great evening.
Thank you.